Good to go.
Okay, so it's Wednesday, July 17th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Having quorum. I'll go to item one and call the Bridgewater Planning Board order. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the Open Meeting Law pursuant to the Governor's approval of a supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the Open Meeting Law have been extended to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, the further extension allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of this extension does not make any substantive changes to the Open Meeting Law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings, March 31st, 2023 to March 31st, 2025. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address the questions through the Chair of the Board, or in this case, we have a host, Mr. O'Brien this evening. The following members of the Board, Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely this evening, Patrick Fusco, the Chair, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, and Mr. Ted Haley. During the meeting, all votes will be roll calls. And the following Bridgewater Town staff are with us this evening as well, Mr. Robert Ruley, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner, Ms. Strisby Jane, the Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Greg Tansy, the Town Engineer, and Mr. Steven Solari, the Building Commissioner. At this time, everyone's mics are muted. The Board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, the project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project's with a public hearing, allow us to public comment. We also use the chat feature and ask you a question by listening to your name, your address, and your question. The Chair or the Host will recognize questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature on the Participation menu. And you'll be unmuted when the Chair or the Host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. First, under item two, we have continued public hearings. We have 456 Bedford Street. This is map 62, lots 34 and 8. This is a proposed expansion of a parking count pursuant to 10.6 site plan approval. This continues from June 5th, 2024. At this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant if they have a presentation to make and then board questions. Is anybody here from the applicant's team?
Yeah, Astrid just entered the room, but Israel is here on behalf of 456. So I will.
Yes. Hello?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Israel Ismaila. I'm here to represent Elite Motors at 456 Bedford Street. Our request is extend the parking space. And we have already provided all the requested documents. Only what left is the cleaning back there, the other side of the building where my landlord is using it. There was some motorcycle parts was over there, so it's been cleaned. At this point, we don't have anything else to do other than that, so that's why I'm here to make it clear.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So sir, was the pile, I see the photos that accompanied the memo. Were the piles out behind the building cleaned as well? I mean, I know those weren't the purview of the Conservation Commission, but just from a site safety standpoint and stuff, there were piles behind the building. Are those gone? Are they still there?
You asked me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's been cleaned and there was paperwork. I'm actually out of country, so they have sent it to me and they said they've been cleared with the town. Everything's all set back there.
Okay. But just from a circulation standpoint, the piles that were behind the building outside of the resource area.
Removed.
They're removed as well?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the only documentation he got from Conservation was with respect to that area between the building and the stream. We didn't issue anything regarding the rear of the building.
Just, I find out, just a question on the plan. It looks like the first page has a typo on it and it should be 56 sales spots. Is that correct? And not 61, is that correct?
Well, we was gonna get 61, then you guys said that's supposed to be there's a parking space for the customer. And so I don't know last time how many parking space you guys agreed to give it to me.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just counting it the last time, I think that was just an error from an old table. But counting it, both plans should consistently say 56 and the site plan does show 56 spaces. So it's just, it could be a quick correction through the endorsement process.
So just for the striping purposes, what is going to be striped? And I mean, are all the spaces going to be painted?
Oh, Israel, I think.
Yes.
Are all the spaces proposed to be painted prior to the cars being located there?
Correct.
So you plan, just so I'm clear. You plan on parking, you plan on striping all the spots, not just the handicapped?
Painted, separate parking spots, is that what you're asking?
Correct. Are you proposing just to paint the customer parking spots and the handicapped or all the spots?
No, not gonna be painted, all the spots. All the spots not gonna be painted.
So Jane, just in terms of painting and the conditions? What do you thought?
Haven't been requested to be painted, though.
Well, just from Mr. Solari or Mr. O'Brien's, just so we can properly condition it. What does the town require to be painted? Is it just the handicap? The handicap lane, the customer spots, or is it all the spots?
Well, the intent of this whole process is for the spots to be, I guess, I guess, in terms of employee parking spaces, the spots that are striped or shown on the plan, I guess, should technically be painted. Steve, go ahead.
This location is mostly gravel. There is no, a lot of these cars right now are not parked on asphalt. And the extension of this parking lot is, I still think gravel. I mean, I don't know what the requirements are. The town doesn't have requirements on parking in spaces. I mean, a lot of towns do. You gotta show exactly parking, but this is a previous gravel. There's asphalt up to a certain point. And then beyond that, it's been a gravel parking lot. And the extension that they've added has continued to be part of the gravel area.
But I guess my question is, is it appears that all the customer spots and handicap spots are on pavement. Is that correct?
That has to be on pavement. The handicap, no matter what, has to be on pavement because they also have to have, they have to look the handicap lane, you know, next to the vans, you know, the one van spot they have to have.
So I guess from a town standpoint, what are we looking, so we can condition it properly, what are we looking to have painted and lined?
I would definitely say, no matter what, you need the handicap spot and you need the you need the basically the customer spots.
So essentially, we would want the paved sparts, I'm sorry, paved spots marked, but the gravel spots would be fine unmarked.
I'm agree with Mike. I mean, I mean, sorry, yeah, because you'd be better off to have anything that's pavement marked out so that at least the initial coming in and going up, you align to this car's not everywhere. And then the gravel area, which is up behind, which, like I said, this would be a different story if this was a total brand new parking lot because then we probably looking at paving and lines, but we're really extending an existing gravel parking lot. It's kind of a little bit of a different situation than a new use or a new, something new coming into the town.
Right, but just, just so I'm clear, all the customer spots and all the handicap spots as shown are on pavement or are gonna be on pavement, correct?
I gotta be, I'm sorry, Pat, I don't have the plan in front of me.
Shane or Israel?
I would say.
Good deal with their.
The plan talks about existing conditions of whatever's there. It says existing pavement or existing surface, but I would say that the customer parking spaces, I would say anything left of the garage, I think, is paved. And I think that's what we would be looking to have paved. So that would be the handicap space as well as the hatch marks, as well as the customer parking, as well as the hatch marks adjacent to it in front of the garage door. So I think that's what the expectations would be. And I believe that area is paved.
Mr. Driscoll, could we also not just condition it so that those spots had to be paved and lined?
Oh, I think we have to, I think we have to condition it that those spot, you know, before he increases. Yes, to comply, right.
So can we condition it that, you know, all customer parking, handicap parking, and any parking that falls on existing asphalt be striped?
I think that's appropriate.
Like that, yeah.
You know, I'm just looking at this right now. So the customer parking that goes right up to the building. This is usually something Mr. Geller picks up. Do we need, is there any type of metering or anything there? Do we need car stops or bollards there? That one spot in the front?
Where customer parking number two?
Correct. Is that the edge? That looks like that's the edge. The car pulls right up to the building, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything proposed there for a car stop, a bollards or anything? Usually we have something put there.
It is not striped over there, but that was their plan to park their car. This is not something I knew it before. If it's been requested before, I would do a stripe it, that spot.
Just sorry not to interrupt, but if you look at the site plan based on the Google Maps, there's an existing parking space already there with hatch marks adjacent to the garage.
I think, I think we'd want, you know, I think, I think if they're proposing handicap spots, that we want those painted and to meet the requirements.
No, I understand from an ADA accessible standpoint. I'm just saying that the parking space that is shown as customer parking to the non-ADA accessible currently exists.
Yeah. All right. But I think just look, I think all the, all the customer parking and the customer parking, including the handicapped, would have to be properly painted and paved. If it's not paved, but we're assuming it's paved, correct?
Yes.
Pat, I think I would condition it the way I, the way I spoke, that all customer parking, handicap parking, and any parking located on existing asphalt needs to be striped.
Okay, so what if they show on parking that's not on? What if they show on existing parking gravel, it needs to be paved?
No, 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 no. Any proposed parking layout that falls on asphalt needs to be striped.
Right, but I believe Mr. Solari said we have to have the customer and the handicap lined, correct?
Right, but as was just said, is that what they're saying is that even though those have to be lined, anything that's on pavement has to have lines so that cars can't be parked haphazardly.
Right, so for instance, spot 56, 55, and probably half of 54 is located on existing parking, is on existing pavement. You know, any striping path lot 56 should not be striped. Where probably today currently there are cars parked.
Well, I would say that based on the aerial and being to the site, everything shown to us, I believe, is on existing pavement. I think there's no parking located on wherever is gravel. So everything here is the existing pavement that exists at the site.
And when you say everything, you mean employee and customer and handicap?
Yes.
But not, and the four sale cars are all on gravel?
I would say right now, at this very time, they're probably not, but I think the intent is that we would get all these spaces as designed to be located on the pavement.
But how, wait, I'm confused. All the spaces are not the retail spaces, though?
I understand.
They're not gonna pave the 56 spots?
I understand that, but they're locating all their parking to be located on existing pavement. Because right now, the cars are everywhere. So part of this is, one, from a licensing perspective and a zoning enforcement perspective, is to place everything on pavement and have spaces located, so we have an exact number, an exact location. So for one, a safety issue, as well as an organizational issue for us to make sure that there will always be 56 spaces for sale.
All right, so we're saying the same thing, employee parking. All right.
Gentlemen, that parking lot is not in good condition as the pavement is not perfectly excellent condition. It's patched, all kinds of things, you know? I don't know how to explain to you guys. Also, this parking lot used to be unlimited parking space after they put a 60, then 50 parking lot. And I've been fighting to extend this limit and then only six cars we increase if it's possible. And all this time, I spent over $10,000 for to for this plot plans, all kind of documentation, everything to prepare and put on a table. And still something coming up which is not being requested before. And I'm also kind of frustrated. I know.
Well, I think, I think.
You guys understand me or not, but.
Well, you're showing a plan with spots, we're just, you know, typically, I just wanna make sure that what's, what has to be painted.
That lot can take a lot of cars and everybody else knows this. That parking lot can take a lot of cars. And to make it everything exactly perfect, this is not my private property to make everything, put that kind of investment to make everything perfect. And it's just where I am. Kind of, I wanna give up and let it be like that. I don't know.
So Mr. Solari, what, what needs to be painted for you to be satisfied?
Well, I'm in agreement with the Board members that the, what needs to be, because again, it's an existing parking lot, it's existing business, it's been a car dealership. And like I said, we're going here to, before we can go in front of the council for more spots, it has to be approved by the planning board and the building inspector and then go to licensing. So in my opinion, at least the handicap spot has to be painted and the customer spots, but I am in agreement with the Board that to me, whatever you have for pavement should be lined because at least you got, on the pavement end, you've got everything in order. So the cars cannot be parked sideways, angular, because as you know, and again, nothing against car dealers. I, my biggest problem on Bedford Street is that I have a lot of them that go way above the amount they're allowed. I mean, I'm not talking about one or two, I'm talking about 20 or 30. So if, if you at least have the paved area, I mean, the paved area lined, we have a distinction, and then you have, the other spots will be, of course, on the gravel surface where they exist now. So to me. Yeah.
I would like to add some. I totally agree with you. It should be everything nice and organized. And I wanna tell you that, that I run my business maximum incorrect way. I park my cars nice and in order. I am not making junkyard since I came to this place.
No, Israel, and I'm not using you as the press because we have other dealerships and that's what I'm saying. As times go on, we're trying to make sure that we at least keep the fronts cleaned up so we know exactly. No, no, I'm not using you as, I've not had any, I have had no issues.
But I wanna bring this to your attention. So far, you have an idea before I came to that place, before two years ago. That place was like a junkyard. And I've been cleaning, organizing that place every single time, every single day, myself in person. I do a lot of work over there. I made that place way better than before.
And I'm not saying you're doing it. That's why we're here. We're just here to finalize this plan.
There's things that we have to require, like the handicap spot be painted, you know? So, all right. I think Mr. Geller made a great suggestion early on, so. Anything else that the Board can think of for questions for?
Well, I guess just to get to the heart of the issue, Mr. Ismaili, I apologize if I pronounce that wrong. Do you have any issue with striping the paved spots?
No, not at all. Just, I would like to complete this meeting and then I'm out of country right now. Came to get married and I'll be back by 25th of this month. And as soon as I arrive there, I'll hire some company to come to stripe as it shows in the plot plan. The handicap spots and the parking spots for the customers where to park, okay? I can have them stripe that and I can even maybe, I'm not gonna make expensive job just like how you see in the road because that's probably a super expensive job to do that, stripe whole parking lot like that. But I'm gonna hire a company to do a nice job and that kind of job, it's gonna last. And that's what I can do. I can promise that I'm gonna take care of that. And you guys shouldn't have a doubt about me keeping my parking lot nice and organized. I'm very disciplined person and keeping my business nice and beautiful and giving good service. That's my that's in my character. So shouldn't, not gonna be issue. If that's what's your concern, striping the parking lot, putting the cars nice and in order, organize. And parking spot, you want me to market for as you guys said, for handicap and customer parking. That will be my promise. I'll take care of that as soon as I get there and you guys can come to confirm it.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much and congratulations, by the way.
I just want to finish this already. It's been while we've been dealing over this.
So Mr. Geller, just back to what you said, because I think you said it pretty well. We wanna have everything, we obviously want the customer parking, the handicap parking in all spots that are on pavement striped per the plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else, anything else we?
And the plan and the parking count should be corrected on one of the plans.
On sheet one, correct. Any, any other questions for the applicants? For the Board? All right, this is still a public hearing. So are there any members of the public here that would like to speak in favor or opposition or ask questions about this project?
Yeah. And there is no one with their virtual hands raised, so I do not have any of the members of the public, their hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any staff comments at this point?
No, it provided some draft conditions for possible approval. I'm happy to add the two conditions that you guys have discussed. But other than that, I think we are satisfied with the site plan itself and look forward to a motion to approve with conditions.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just think if somebody presents a site plan to us showing parking spots and paintings, it should be painted per the plan. But if we just wanna keep it to the asphalt, I mean, that's up to the Board, so.
I apologize, Mr. O'Brien. What's the second condition?
The changing from, it was a Scrivener's error in the first plan that showed us, it was a 67, 61 sale parking spaces when there only be 56 authorized.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the Board? Anything else from the public? If there's nothing else, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Some moved, second.
By Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald. Ms. Roja is still not with us, correct?
No, she's here.
She, she's here.
Okay. I want Ms. Pagan, no?
Yep, Ms. Pagan's here. We have a full board.
All right, good. All right, so we have motion to close the public hearing with a second. I'll take the roll. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Pat. No, we didn't have a motion or a second.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
I apologize.
Motion by Mr. Geller, second by Mr. McDonald.
Sorry, I didn't catch that. Apologies. All right, back to you.
So I already went through, Mr. McDonald, you were yes, Mr. Geller, you were yes, Ms. Roja?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Okay, so just to discuss the plan, do we have Mr. O'Brien offered us a draft condition. I just noticed in the draft condition, it didn't talk anything about striping. I think Mr. Geller gave us a good suggestion. Do we wanna talk about that, striping?
I'm okay with the proposed condition to stripe the paved area. I think the gravel is fine as it is.
So all customer, all handicapped? And everything on pavement, whether it's a for sale spot, employee spot, or for sale spot, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. That's correct.
And then the other condition would be the max sale vehicle count would be 56, correct?
Correct.
So that would be added as condition 18 and condition 19 per the draft conditions. If added, of course.
You know, prior to, do we have to, that, you know, the striping has to be done prior to any addition of vehicles or applying for any license increase? Is that we should, we should put that language in there? So Mr. Solari has some.
Yeah, we don't have a CO or a building permit per se to tie it up this, so yeah, we could tie it to licensing. So, but Mr. Solari and I can keep watch as well.
All right, do we have any more discussion on this? Does somebody wanna make a motion either to approve it or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve with the standard conditions Mr. O'Brien has laid out with the addition of the two conditions, that being regarding the striping and the Scrivener's errors correction.
Thanks. A motion by Mr. McDonald with a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Geller? Any discussion? I'll take the roll. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Israel. Good luck.
I appreciate that. Um, but about uh, striping the parking lot, uh, it is my word and then I'm the man of my word. I'll keep, I'll keep my word. I'll take care of it as soon as I get there.
All right, Israel, I'll, once the decision's finalized, we'll have it at the clerk's office and um, we'll forward it your way. So we'll keep you in the boat, keep you in the loop.
Thank you, Shalima.
Take care.
You guys have a great night.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank.
Okay, so um, under item two, the second continued public hearing we have this evening is zero Plymouth Street, map twenty four, lot fifty two. This is a site plan review under section ten point six for a new office warehouse building with packing drainage utilities. This is continued from our June twenty sixth meeting. Uh, I believe Mr. Cosker is with us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll turn it over to you.
For the record, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Michael Coska. I'm an engineer. Uh, operating from ninety eight Broad Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Uh, the last time that we were uh, initially before you, uh, the plan got reviewed by the town planner, Mr. O'Brien and subsequently by Mr. Tanzi, uh, town engineer. We have received comments back from our second review. Um, there is nothing there that we uh, feel is um, detrimental to what we're trying to do and all of the conditions or the additions that we can make as far as Mr. Tanzi's uh, second review um, will be put on the plan and could be made as conditions of approval. If that is what uh, you and the board wish to do. Um, the in in and that's sheets one through six. The drainage, uh, I went to the planning board office today and forwarded um, uh, through Shane uh, to Greg. Uh, that the checklist was not stamped. Uh, I made a copy of that page and sent it along. And there is uh, on the standard ten and um, a illicit discharge certification. Uh, that was uh, sent over. Um, so any comments from sheet one through sheet six, which are the plans, we would be happy to add all of those uh, comments that uh, Greg had to make it uh, one hundred percent uh, compliant as far as um, he is concerned. And Shane, I don't know if he has anything um, uh, left from his review, but I thought that we satisfied it and uh, it would be probably best uh, to see what his status might be at this point. But I, I'm hoping that we have a, have it in order. Remember, Mr. Chairman, uh, this plan went uh, through the board as a uh, contractors building once and then it was a uh, a restaurant. Uh, second time, we're back to the contractors yet for the third time around, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. I just, I have two follow up questions, the same question as I asked when we had the initial meeting. And maybe Mr. Tanzi can answer this. So the Cape Cod berm show shown going out to uh, Mill Street? Is that, is Mill Street curving? Is it, is it no curving on Mill Street? Is it granite? Because typically if there's granite, we have granite on the radius. What what is on Mill Street? And should that be granite at the radius coming in like we typically require?
I think that uh, what they have on the uh, edges there is just uh, there's no Cape Cod berm or granite curbing there at this time.
Mr. Tanzi, do you have an opinion on that? I mean, it's, if it's fine, it's fine. I just want to make sure that typically, typically we have the granite transition into a Cape Cod berm.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing any type of um, granite or um, vituminous uh, berm out there. Um, so if that be the case, the way they presented the plan, I'm okay with it. If you wanted to just cover your, you know, tracks, you could condition it such that if there is such a, you know, granite curbing out there, that the return curves be granite to match the existing or something of that nature.
Um, I didn't go with this, so I'm not sure.
There's nothing there. There's no granite.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then Mr. Um, Coska, the only other thing we, I I just went through the plans, I it's, we talked about this plan the same night we had eight fifteen Bedford Street on and we talked about a um, a district buffer strip and we determined that there's plenty of vegetation behind the building. There's the um, easement behind the building and this a pond between this and the residential. So we we determined that, that we didn't need a different district buffer strip. But the street buffer strip, the board indicated, and I had mentioned that we'd we'd like to see that that done. And that's, that was um, in our, in our rules and in our zoning now, it talks about um, basically the three frontage, there should be a trees every thirty feet, evergreen and shade trees mixed at a certain caliber.
Okay, we have uh,
Something I can, because I see there's only four, five plant, five trees on the plan now.
Uh, let's see.
Four maple and a
Tree.
So it just does in the, in the business gateway, east gateway, Elm Street overlay, south business, industrial A, industrial B. The SPGA, a planning board may require a landscape buffer strip of at least twenty feet wide, continuous. Approved driveways to be established adjacent to public ways, visually separating parking and other uses from the road. The buffer strip shall be planted with grass, medium height shrubs, evergreens and shade trees, having a minimum four inch caliper um, every thirty feet. So if that's something that could be added to the plan, I mean, we don't have to hold it up tonight, I don't think, but just if that could be added.
Okay, because um, a twenty foot buffer strip, buffer strip, I would suppose that if you look where the snow storage area is on sheet number two of six, um, we can put uh, you know, uh, twenty feet there, but then you're into the uh,
Well, I think, I mean, look, look at Plymouth, Plymouth Street is is the main, I guess, I guess just me looking at the plan. We, I don't want you to change the parking later, I think myself, but just along Plymouth Street and you have plenty of gra, you have plenty of grass area between the parking lot and Plymouth Street. And then we we can along Mill Street, I guess.
Okay, um, Mr. Dyer is here with me and he doesn't have any issue with that. So yes, that could be a condition of approval and uh,
Pat, are you talking, are you talking about possible plantings?
Add the trees uh, as necessary.
What's what's that, Mr. O'Brien?
Are you talking about plantings along Plymouth Street in this area?
Plymouth Street and Mill Street and the grass areas, yeah.
No, I know. I just, I I'm just in terms of visualizing it. We have trees along Mill Street, but you were looking for some more prominent shade trees on um, around Plymouth Street, okay. It's just, I was outside the utility area, of course, because I know that um, based on past plans that um, National Grid is very uh, uh, determined to make sure that there's no trees in their uh, easement area.
All right, those are my moments. So I'll turn it, I'll turn it over to the board for other questions.
Uh, just for uh, Mr. Tanzi, any general comments on the plan? Um, I know you've made some in writing, but uh,
Yeah, they they seem to have cleaned up all of my um, concerns. Um, I don't think there's anything, anything substantive or material um, that can't be conditioned.
Okay, excellent. Okay, is is there anything you'd like to see conditioned? Uh, you kind of left a little bit of a leading comment at the last bit there.
Well, i- it's really up to the the board. Um, I would just want to, probably a a practical condition would be to um, you know, make sure that the utility easement is um, un-unobstructed, um, you know, at grade or even above grade. Um, if you're getting into some, some tree plantings, um, you you'd hate to see a a tree get limbed uh, just because it was interfering with some type of a overhead utility.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then I read your, I read your letter a couple of days ago. I can't find it right now, but you had mentioned we should condition it upon a dark sky. Is that what you said? Is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's correct. I think um, what they are proposing will meet the dark sky requirements, but it never um, you know, hurts to condition it in case somebody has a complaint, um, you know, about glare or something, at least the the planning board would have the uh, the ability to go back and have them put a shield on it or um, make the luminaire a different um, incandescence or whatever needs to be done. Um, I'm not overly concerned about it because it doesn't seem like it needs a whole lot of light lighting. Um, it's a relatively small parking lot, but then again, it is um, at a corner that is, you know, fairly heavily traveled, so.
Um, Talk with uh, Mr. Tanzi's comments as well, too. The the applicant did provide us lighting specs and they're all box lights off the building. Um, so any light pollution you would really get is if someone was driving toward the building. But i- in terms of adjacent properties, you're really not going to get a lot of uh, light pollution from those box lights. It's more for the safety of the uh, workers or employees of those uh, locations.
Do the box lights comply with dark sky?
Yeah, I would, I assume so. Looking at the specs, um, they're downward facing. They're not, they're down, not everywhere.
Okay, good.
So the the other thing I see on Mr. Tanzi's uh, thing is the comment remains about the uh, illicit discharge statement?
Uh, yeah, he he had, this afternoon, he had submitted that. Um, and I don't have a problem with that statement.
Okay.
It is more of a formality. Um, a lot of times they'll uh, resubmit that after construction to ensure that there aren't any illicit discharges being tied into the drainage system.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that everything's caught, that's all. Yeah. Good, I agree. Any um, any other board questions, comments? How about staff? Uh, I mean, uh, if the public hearings, I'll open it up to the public at this point. Anybody from the public?
Uh, let me check for some virtual hands, someday maybe real life hands. Uh, I don't see anyone in the chat. Um, so I do not see any, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so if we're um, comfortable and there's no more questions, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Some moved. And Mr. Geller, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Haley? I'll take the roll. And Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
I mean, yes, okay. So just discussing um, things that I wrote down. I I don't think it makes sense if, I mean, I trust Mr. Dyer, Mr. Coska, if they say there's nothing there, I don't think we need to add any granite curve. As if there was granite there, I just want to make sure we're consistent, so. Um, is everybody okay with that?
No problems here.
Um, I, you know, I I would like them to add the plantings to comply with um, section six point four of our, of our performance of our landscape standards. But um, you know, there's a lot of frontage on on um, on Mill Street and Plymouth Street. If it interferes with an easement or it interferes with a proposed parking lot layout, I don't want that to change, but just work the trees around um, the existing grass area, you know, at the intervals proposed in the, in that ordinance. Um, did anybody else have anything else? Uh, the um, we, the downward lighting, is that correct? The night sky?
Yeah, agreed.
And Mr. Geller, you asked Mr. Tanzi about a drainage issue and that Mr. Tanzi said was resolved today, is that correct?
Yeah.
And Pat, so the dark skies, uh, I did have that as a condition of the decision um, as number eighteen. That site shall be uh, dark sky compliant.
Okay, so the, what we're really adding is the planting schedule from six point four and that's it, right?
So I got one other question is, is is the applicant, I know they said yes, but I just want to make sure that they're okay with recommended binder course thickness? And everything else under the construction details? Since it is going to be heavy trucks going in there? Yes, we're all set with it. You're asking me? Yes.
Yeah, the owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well as I did.
Comments, that's why.
Yeah, I did provide a comment. I did provide a condition as well, too, um, prior to endorsement of the plans that um, the applicant provide the necessitated information per the uh, July seventeenth um, town engineer review for um, compliance too. So uh, making sure that prior to uh, the chair signing the plans and prior to a building permit that the plans are compliant to Mr. Tanzi's comments.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion on the project?
Uh, I I will make the motion to approve, but uh, Mr. O'Brien, do we need any special wording for the uh, the plantings or our minutes?
I would, I would, I would leave it up to uh, let's um, you want to do it on the motion, Pat?
Yeah, I would, I would just, I would just say that, you know, make a motion to approve that that um, six point four two lays out the requirements for the buffer strip. And it talks about, you know, um, certain caliper trees being planted at intervals of every thirty feet. Now, obviously, if there's a an easement or something else that one of them has to get removed, the two of them removed, that's, that's, that should just be noted on the plan prior to endorsement.
Will do, and I'll let you review those plans, Mr. Chair.
Right, and I think, Mr. O'Brien, we're trying to get away from um, the pear tree in town, is that correct?
Yes, we're uh, getting, we we've eliminated them as a uh, shade tree possibility from street trees. Um, so not to say that we really have any strong purview, but yeah, I wouldn't care for lowering pear here. So um, you know, uh, may, the maples that they mentioned are fine, so maybe just.
Maple pine, just more native stuff. That's, that's what we're looking for, right?
Yeah, I would, I would say more shade trees than evergreens.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so moved.
And that's, that's, that's outlining the six point four point two of the zone, so, okay.
Oh, Mr. McDonald, you made the motion, so you can't second too.
No, no, he 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 added the motion. He's, he said so.
Oh, okay, I apologize. You're right.
So so Mr. McDonald made a motion with the condition, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Geller? Uh, okay, so I'll take the roll. We have a motion to approve with the condition. Um, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Haley? Mr. Haley?
Yes.
All right, I mean, yes. Thank you, Mr. Coska, Mr. Dyer, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your uh, time this evening, uh, and uh, uh, we look forward to uh, getting everything uh, shipshape for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so item three, we have um, three requests for street acceptance. They're all order uh, fiscally at twenty twenty four. Numbers forty seven, forty eight, forty nine. They're all the same neighborhood. Um, the Old Field Open Space Subdivision, Timber Lane, Old Field Road and Urbek Circle Extension. Um, I don't know, is Mr., is Attorney Castaneda here or Mr. O'Brien who wants to lead off? Um, I don't know, is Mr., is Attorney Castaneda here or Mr. O'Brien who wants to lead off?
Believe he is here, but I think he also let me know that he has a prior arrangement. Um, so that being said, eh, this was a referral from town council anyways for a street acceptances for. Uh, the three proper, uh, three streets. Uh, mentioned, uh, Timber Lane, Old Field Road, Urbek Circle Extension. Um, in which through this process, we would receive. Comments from various members of staff, uh, one of which was the water department. In terms of some notes, uh, based on the street acceptances. Uh, based on if they had any issues, um. Or any issues with uh boxes or curb boxes, so. Um, forward along to the board, um, they did note a. Fair amount of curb boxes bent at a fair amount of the sites. Um, so I provided that as part of our uh memo to staff, I mean, to uh board members. Um, I did receive some public comments. I also forwarded along to uh. Board members. I know that the town council holds a public meeting, um, but um. So I did provide a memo to the board, um, in terms of. Some of the deficiencies, uh, like I said, we're. Holding some bond money as well for this property, so typically when we're holding bond money, that means that there are things that haven't been requested. Yet or finalized, um. So, um, so that being said, you know, we're a non-binding recommendation to town council. Town Council F will take whatever our recommendation is. Uh, from this meeting and choose what they want to do. Um, town council will also hold a public hearing with notice to a butters for this project. Um, that being said, when we received this uh notification, uh. It was, I didn't schedule it for the special hearing. As well as we didn't have a meeting July third. Um, so any action um for the board would have to take place today. Um, as today is the forty third of the forty fifth day to uh provide a response to town council. So, um. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if any of you board head members has any questions on our end. Regarding the information that you have, happy to work with you.
So Shane, I, I went out there yesterday.
Sure.
Um. There's four things that I wrote down, so, um. The drainage basins, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Tansy before we. Vote on this. Will give us an update, but it's, but it, it appears that. The drainage basins need to be mowed or haven't been maintained this year, um. Um, street uh, the street sweeping, there appears to be some puddling in some areas of, of sand. There do appear to be some dead as uh. Street trees actually. Um, on the corner of uh Urbek Circle Extension and um Timber Lane. That whole property is missing the street trees. And, you know, I've, I've, I, this, this, this. A, a big piece of open space that was supposed to go to Wildlands Trust. And I emailed Michael Dutton twice the last couple of weeks to find out where we are with the Jenny Leonard open space. I, I never got a response either email. So. You know, I think we need an update with the open space with the Wildlands Trust. We need to get an update from. Michael Dutton on this take how, you know, as part of this street acceptance, so we just combining that with the. Just like we take the drainage parcels, we take a Jenny Leonard parcel that way, or we handling it another way. Um, trees need to be addressed sweeping and, and the drainage basins, and then. I, I know you sent over the water department concerns, and I don't know if Greg has any other concerns, but. Uh, I, I think there's some outstanding things we need to address before we make a positive recommendation. Mr. Tan, and Mr. Anybody else on the board? I don't know if anybody else went out and looked at it since we got the request, or. Anybody else on the board have questions from Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Tansy?
Yeah, I mean, it's uh pretty close to me, so I'm familiar with the area. Uh, I would have to agree with everything Mr. Driscoll said. Um, Mr. O'Brien, in your professional opinion, uh. If you were in our position, would you recommend approving or denying this request at this time?
Uh, well, it would be approval or denial. It would be a recommendation or not recommendation. Uh, I would say. Anytime we're holding bond money for a property, uh, I wouldn't recommend a street acceptance as well as uh the condition of the original decision.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with the bond money. Everything could be done. They just may not have requested. I just think there's outstanding issues there.
Sure, I would just say that more often than not. You wouldn't be holding, uh, uh, someone wouldn't be holding. The town wouldn't be holding someone's money unless work has been done.
Right, I think a big part of this too, is that open space needs to be resolved, you know?
Sure, and I would say there was a condition of the original decision too, that. Prior to the street acceptance, that a, a maintenance bond to be determined by the highway superintendent or town engineer. Or the cost of maintaining detention basins. Um, be included um as well too, so. You know, that's, that's a number that. I'm not sure how much that would cost in terms of maintenance purpose.
Right, I, I mean, even, even though we're holding bond money, I mean, does that bond money, is there enough in there to even? Correct all these deficiencies? I mean, anything that's deficient, we should not even.
I would say it's, it's not a substance. I would say. The bo, I would say that the bond money matches the deficiencies.
But if there's deficiencies that hasn't even met what the initial approval is for, I, I, how can we recommend to accept this?
Well, I mean, typi- typically, we got a letter from engineering, uh DPW on this. Greg, did you review this at all yet or not?
Well, I did, actually about a, a year ago. They did um quite a lot of work on the detention basins, cleaning them up. Um. Uh, mowing them. They uh, the, there was a lot of um. Scarring in the Cape Cod berms that came about from their plowing operations. And they did the work. And they cleaned the, the detention basins. Um, there was uh some pavement issues at the, at the community mailbox. Uh, but the developer claims that he didn't do that, that that was done by a landscaper.
Uh, I guess the question is, have you been back out there to review these issues, or have you?
No, I haven't, I haven't been able to, I didn't get a chance to go back out there. To uh look at these issues. I know that there was some tree issues. Um, it's, it's primarily that lot at the corner of. Uh, Timberland and um Urbek. Apparently that homeowner didn't want trees planted on their property, so the developer didn't. I don't know if. He's obligated to plant the trees whether the homeowner wants them or not. And that, that was always, that's been an issue that never really got resolved.
Aren't those trees in the layout typically? I mean.
Yeah, no, they are, they are, they are, they are, so I don't think the homeowner really has a say in it, but.
Alright, so.
So these, these are decisions that have to be made and.
Any, any, any other board questions or comments?
I, I guess I would have one regarding the tree, uh, the tree issue. Uh, what would your opinion on that be, Mr. O'Brien?
For trees, I would say, well, not to make any homeowners upset, but. Our goal in our job is uh town, uh, the town is to make sure that the plan is compliant. It, whether or not, once everything's completed, someone decides to take down a tree, then. It becomes a different fight, but during the process of development and uh necessarily an unfinished subdivision. It should be built to the standard that was approved by uh the town and the planning board.
Thank you very much.
I, I know there are some residents on here as well, um. Is there anybody that wants to speak?
Sure, we have a Eileen with her hand raised.
Hi, is my speaker on?
It is, yes. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name's Eileen Baron White. I am a resident, uh, former HOA trustee, but I am speaking on behalf of the residents. Um, as well as the, the current trustees, Missy Shireman and Jonathan Vino. Um, I know you're in receipt, the board is in receipt of a letter that I had sent outlining a lot of the issues that the chair just touched on. Um, so I appreciate that. My only comment tonight, and I appreciate your time, is just, I would also. Hope that you would not recommend at this point that the town council goes ahead with accepting the roads, considering there are so many issues remaining. That are directly in the subdivision improvement guarantee agreement between Long Built and the town that have not been addressed. We as homeowners are not asking the town in any way to mediate. Issues for owners between Long Built, but only to hold Long Built to the standards in that agreement. And I appreciate letting me speak um briefly tonight. I know this wasn't a public thing, but I just wanted you to, to get our side of things.
Okay, thank you very much. Attorney, maybe, uh, have you joined us now? I saw you were muted, now you're unmuted.
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add at this point, sir?
Yeah, on the trees on the corner. I just said that singular issue, uh, the trees aren't in the right of way. The trees are on the, the trees are laid out on the lots because of the width of the uh right of way. So, yeah, it's, it's a dilemma. Um, when a homeowner uh tells us that they don't want trees on their lot. And I'm trespassing on his property uh against their will, so I don't really have an answer for how.
On, on that, on that plan, on that plan, isn't there a ten foot planting easement? On the sub, on the subdivision plan, typically, we, if, if they're outside the layout, we use that to do a ten foot planting easement. Is that on the plan or no?
Uh, not knowledge, but I, I'd have to look again. The plan, if you, if you recall, the plan goes back to uh two thousand and. Uh, fifteen, no, two thousand and five, I believe.
Yeah, I guess at that point, Pat, I guess there's a practicality of enforcement, whether it be. The developer or the homeowner who the board would take action with.
Okay. So Attorney Castaneda, while you're on, what, what's the status of the large open space piece? And the one that we want the town to take for the Jenny Leonard Park, can you give us some update on those?
I have, that, that was being undertaken, the, the Jenny Lee Park was being undertaken by you. Um, we, we've, we've already transferred it to the homeowners association. Uh, what the town decides to do with it, that's entirely up to you.
So the, so the. But I thought, I, I thought the town has first right of refusal on that. Isn't that part of the agreement?
As I said, the town, the town can do whatever it like, whatever it would like. The town can, can certainly. Take it, and I'm sure the homeowners association would be happy to convey it to them. But that's an action that the town has to, has to take. I can't uh, I can't force the town to.
What about, what about?
Want, that they want to take that.
What about the um, the other open spaces, Wildlands Trust? Where is that?
Uh, waiting for Wildlands Trust uh to uh. Approve final action. They've agreed, they've already agreed to uh accept the donation. And um, they move, as I think we all know, uh extraordinarily slow. And um, we're just waiting for them to uh. Complete their process internally.
So who controls that larger piece of open space now?
Uh, that's the homeowners association.
And the homeowners association, there's an agreement between you and the homeowners association, once that approved. Once that approved, they'll turn it over to Wildlands Trust.
That's my understanding.
Because typically, if we turn it over to an HOA, there should be a conservation restriction on it, but it was our understanding it was going to Wildlands Trust.
And that is the goal.
But if you don't control it, how do we ensure that the HOA will transfer to the town and to Wildlands Trust?
Well, then we just have to trust that with the trustees to uh assure you that that's their intention. I think they all agree. Uh, from our conversations with them, that it's uh in their best interest. Um, to complete that conveyance.
Yeah, uh, just to step in, I, the, like I said, eh, well, one, the conversation, we're trying to primarily focus on. The acceptance of the streets. I understand there's uh some prominent outstanding issues with. Old Field Estates, um, Phase Two, that we need to address, um, but I would say that the decision itself pretty much. Talks about that, um, we do hold bond money and. There are some outstanding issues that we would need to follow up on a town level, as well as uh me reaching out to Mr. Castaneda. Um, but I would also say there's probably some outlying issues uh between. Uh, developer and HOA that still need to be resolved on their end. Um, that the town is not totally looking to mediate. Um, so we're just kind of keeping track of this. Process as it comes and understanding the uh, the problems and the possible solutions.
I think, I think other than the issues we identified tonight with engineering and, and whatnot. The, the open space needs to be addressed. I mean, if it's going to remain in the HOA, it needs to have a conservation restriction on it.
No, I understand. I'm just saying is, that's not, uh, I wouldn't say that's a pertinent reason to reject or accept a street acceptance. You can mention your recommendations, but I wouldn't say that's why we recommend it to.
How do, well, if we, if we release the neighborhood from the planning board, how do we have any control over that, Shane?
Eh, are you talking, what, what do you mean?
The, the open space is part of the, the, the permit.
No, I understand that. I, I, I. There is language, I would say, through subdivision agreements. As well as other agreements made between the town and the developer that are still actionable. Um, beyond the decision, and I'm happy to provide it to you, Mr. Chair, um. For that work to be completed, as well as other open space to be followed prominently. Um, but like I said, I'm, I'm focusing solely on the street acceptances tonight. Um, if we want to have a, a more thorough conversation.
But I think the subdivision is not complete until, you know, the, the, the. The, the open space was supposed to be addressed at a certain building permit. That was never done. Now the.
Yes.
It just keeps, it just keep get, gets, getting kicked down.
Well, I can be completely honest with you. There was staff at the time allowed permits to occur. Uh, be signed off on past the, I think it was sixty eighth or something. So it came to a point where discovering this information. That there wasn't really anything that the, on our end we could hold, because the amount of. Permits issued and COs issue were way past that number to hold the applicant accountable.
I just think while we're still involved, we have to address the issues, that's all.
No, I agree. I just say, eh, eh, I would say street acceptance as well. I would say street acceptance in that issue are related but separate.
Alright, any other board comments? I see there's a, a resident comment, um, this Eileen, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, no, she spoke already.
But I did speak, but I, I just, I wasn't sure. I know Mr. O'Brien is saying it's two separate issues. I may be able to brought, provide a little bit more. Insight to those open space parcels. They were both transferred via a quitclaim deed by Long Built. Um, on October twenty thir- thirty first of twenty twenty three without any notification to the HOA. So we are now listed as the owners of those spaces. I, as trustee back in twenty twenty three, my term was up in twenty four. Um, spoke with Wildlands Trust because we were told initially at the onset of the HOA. When we had a meeting with Mr. Castaneda. Um, to set it up that he was going to transfer that space long before anything. Uh, the HOA was formed, that was never done. We were then told he was going to uh transfer that to the Wildlands Trust. I'm talking about the one on the um. Up to Magnolia, the not the Jenny Leonard, the other one. Uh, so after that transfer came through, which we were surprised by, I did reach out to Wildlands. I know at that point, they were very. Open to continuing on with us. He had told me at that time that. Mr. Castaneda had told him, um, he was working on it and would get back to him. So I said, well, we have a little transfer of. Uh, trustees in January, so we will. Meet and discuss it after them, which right now it is just sitting, as far as we know, the HOA owns those two parcels. And we are currently insuring those two parcels.
I mean, it's extremely frustrating. We talk about this every time this neighbor comes up. I don't know why we can't get some resolution from both the town side and the Jenny Leonard piece. And from Attorney Castaneda and Wildlands Trust, the other piece. It's just, it's the same conversation every time we meet, so. Any, anything else from the board? Anything else from the public? Do we have a motion or a recommendation to vote on? To recommend or not recommend? To recommend or not recommend?
I guess, I guess at this time, where there's quite a few still deficiencies, I would make a motion to not recommend to accept the streets. Due to the deficiencies that we discussed in tonight's meeting, till those get rectified.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Geller, second by. By Mr.
Haley.
Just for discussion, I mean, I'll, I'll never vote for street acceptance until the open space stuff is resolved, so. That's just where I stand.
I apologize, Mr. Disclosions, in the restroom, while. You were talking to Mr. O'Brien about the street acceptance part. Mr. O'Brien, in your opinion, why is. The open space issue not relevant to the street acceptance?
Uh, because with a street acceptance. It's making sure that the streets themselves and the infrastructure related to the streets. Are acceptable for the town to accept. Whether it be through plowing or pavement, so meeting a certain standard, whereas open space itself. Through this open space development. Isn't necessarily pertinent to what our. Scope is for review for street acceptances.
And I know we have a motion in a second, but just to continue the discussion, we, we've been through this. I mean, there were four mays done to take. Infrastructure off the open space parcels to. To make it more attractive to Wildlands Trust and to get it going and everything else. And. It's disappointing to hear that without any notification, last October, it was transferred to the homeowners association. There's no conservation restriction on the parcel. It, it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I just have a follow up question, Mr. O'Brien. If we. Choose to not use street acceptance as a. A tool to get the open space compliance, Mr. Ryan, what would our best follow up be?
I would say that I would probably need to think about that more. It's not that, it's not something that. We haven't discussed internally.
I, I mean, the neighborhood has to be complete before we can recommend. Street acceptance. In my opinion, the neighborhood's not complete and. To answer Mike's question, this, we have no leverage. Once we release the bond and approve the street, no leverage.
That's my concern.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, more discussion? I'll take the role, Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Rohan?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, so motion to not recommend passes.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm going to write up a letter to send over to you. For review, and then I will be sending it over to council. By tomorrow or Friday, within that timeframe. And then from there, Town Council will take the recommendation, use it, whatever they seem fit.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Item four. This is just something, we're in a new fiscal year, and I don't know if anybody has to be reappointed or was reappointed or needs to be reappointed. To the board. But just every year, it's just, it's in the, it's in the. Volunteer handbook that we. Talk about organization and how the organization is set up, you know, chair, vice chair, clerk, et cetera, that Mr. O'Brien noted. Do we want to make any changes? Do we, does anybody want to change their role, step down, step up? Status quo, what, what do we want to do?
I've been thinking about this since the last meeting. I, I think we, we should consider appointing a clerk.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have one year left. I don't think I'm gonna, I think in this, I'm. I have interest in going to another board in the spring, so I'm willing to serve as chair one more year, if you guys want me to. But I think we're gonna have to have somebody step up. Either in April or. Next July, so. It's, but I, I'm happy to do it for another year. I don't know, you know, if anybody, if we want to appoint a clerk, so we have a third backup if. You know, we can keep things the way they are, just looking for input, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine. I, 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 I'm okay with keeping it the way it is, and if, you know, I'll be more than happy to step up as a clerk.
Now, why don't, why don't we do that? Because it's, it's good to have you back us up, Steve, you know. If you won't, so, Mike, you want to stay? Vice chair?
I'm, I'm happy to do so, yes.
Okay, and I'll. I'll stay in my role if you guys want me to, so.
Of course.
Do you want to vote on that, Shane, or just this discussion?
Um, I would. I'll do it the old fashioned way where we would have motions and to appoint everyone, just so we have record of it.
Can we just do one motion to move things along?
We can, if, if, if the board members all vote for it, so.
And I know we didn't hear from Mr. Rohan, so Mr. Haley, are you guys comfortable where you are? Is there, would you like to make any changes or? What are your thoughts?
And I'm comfortable with keeping it as is right now.
You guys froze on, on me. I'm, I'm, I'm good. And if I heard correctly, Steve had said that. He would move into the clerk role.
I guess, I guess in that sense, I'm looking at it, I think all we would need to do is. Appoint Steve as the clerk and then just maintain status quo.
Okay, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Geller as a clerk of the planning board.
I'll second that.
Mr. Geller, that means you have to do all the minutes now, you know that?
No, it's you, I would say. No, I would say that staff would continue to do minutes and then. We would heavily depend on Mr. Geller to. Transcribe our.
I'm kidding.
Our language.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. I'll take the role, Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Rohan?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes, with title of VCC.
Vice Clerk Chair.
McDonald?
Yes.
I may ask, okay. All right, item five, we have minutes from the seventeenth and the fifteenth, April, excuse me, we have minutes from April seventeenth to May fifteenth. That Mr. O'Brien provided in the packet. Does anybody have any questions on them? Do we want to make a motion to approve?
Some vote.
A motion by Mr. McDonald to second.
Second.
And Mr. Geller, any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? I'll take the role, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohan?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, I'll turn it over to you. You drafted some standards for special permits for duplexes.
Yeah, we just wanted to have a continuing conversation about. The two special duplex standards. So. What we provided, like I said, we had existing special permit standards that I kind of incorporated into. Or duplexes or for, I guess, minor, these kind of minor special permits that don't go as intensive as some of the other special permits that we have. But we do have an item on an upcoming meeting too, that also kind of questions. Those standards as well, because I guess if we're focusing solely on special permit standards for duplexes. That there's another type of special permit that exists in our zoning ordinance because of the changes. For this board to look at as well too. That is a project coming before us where it's a change in use. From a existing building to. A change in use from a use in an existing building to a different use. Requiring a special permit. So. Looking at that, I, I'm fine with what I presented in terms of for duplexes, but. I'm kind of wrapping my head around other standards that we're looking at because based on. Looking at the project, I completely understand. What they provided in terms of plan sets because it. It doesn't require anything. They're not changing anything to the site other than interior layout. But we have a certain set of standards that we need to abide by, so. I guess, looking at it from.
But, but in that case, we can look at it, and you, you mentioned that in that particular case, they have options where they can ask for a fee waiver, correct?
Correct. They, they request, they are requesting an engineering fee waiver, which is something I was going to bring up to the, for the town planner. Report. So that, that will be coming on for that meeting, but I just want to preface it, but yeah, it, it, it doesn't really require any engineering review. It's more just kind of looking at the lay of the law of what our special permit standards are. So I, I'm, I'm fine with, not to talk too much, but I think the addition of those standards for special permit for duplexes are fine. But we also look at our ten five standards and kind of, I guess, sort them based on size of project too. Because, you know, those are the, those are the stronger standards compared to kind of our, because they're, they're held by the zoning ordinance compared to our own personal standards. Which are just held by us.
So Shane, are you going to clean those up and get them to us to vote on at the upcoming, upcoming, upcoming meeting or what?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. All right, August seventh meeting?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could just go back for a second. Mr. O'Brien, if you had to characterize the biggest changes of the duplexes. Regulation, what, what would you, what would you characterize that as?
The biggest changes from what we've, we have or what we would be creating through it?
For, for what we have, to what we'd be creating, yep.
Oh, we don't, what we have right now is a very general standard through our zoning ordinance for. Like environmental impact of project, which still, would still exist through every special permit review. Traffic and circulation, whereas. When someone's building a duplex on a singular lot, there's not a traffic issue really created. You're getting. Or trips per day that often occur. In terms of environmental impact, if it's a vacant lot, then the environmental impact is very limited and. Our special permit standards kind of talks about lighting and site layout and it's. Of course, we could review it by that, but in terms of. Review of our having separate standards for duplexes, it, it kind of allows for us to. Kind of clean it up from like a design standpoint, like the conversation we had with a previous project with Broad Street. It was making sure that we ironed out. Driveway length as well as drainage issues. As well as the septic size too.
You gave two examples, one is a change of use, one's a two family house. Should we categorize instead of calling it special standards for duplexes? Should it be minor special permit?
We could. We, we could categorize minor special permits.
Because that way you could change this, you could. You know, we've talked about this in the past. When it, when it support bill about the fee went up and stuff like that, but I just think, you know. Down the line, we should look at that and maybe call it a minor special permit.
Well, even then too, if it doesn't require a review fee, it could be something that we would have. I guess, being that, looking at one of the items that are going to be on the August seventh meeting. It's made me kind of, like you said, question just having standards for duplexes, but rather. Standards for special permits that aren't as intense, like a change in use or a duplex.
See, Mike, Michael, just to answer like. This, this happened because when we did the zoning rewrite. And the table of uses, we switched it from book planning board to ZBA. So we both have different processes on how to review. A two family dwelling, and it, it kind of just lumped it in. We. I think it's probably an asset thought. It's kind of just lumped it into our general special permit process.
Yeah, I would say that prior to this, our special permits were typically. Of larger projects or, I'm trying to think of another good example. Or something that was in an area that really wasn't acceptable, so. Typically, everything we see would be as of right through site plan review, whereas we wouldn't probably see a lot of special permits unless it were tied to a site plan review. In that case, then we're just utilizing site plan review standards and something similar to, or like our performance standards of larger projects. Which have more weight to them than some of the special permit standards.
So this is really just a modernization or, or an errata of.
It's a. A resurrection of older standards to a more modern sense based on the recodification.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, years ago, a duplex in C and D could be built as of right. It didn't need a special permit. Then years ago, it could change to a special permit, but it's through a ZBA process. And they just basically looked at it very high level, and then when we did the zoning recodification, it could switch the planning board. Which it probably should be a planning board, if you got to look at grading and drainage and stuff like that, if that applies, but. You know, but we need to develop some standards to review, that's all.
Yeah, I think the goal is for us to have a set of standards as well as. For those who are looking to get special permits to also understand our standards as well too, so we're all on the same page. So someone would come in and not kind of play a guessing game where we're getting some plans that have some information. Or some plans that have too much information, just kind of have a level playing field for these special permits, whether it be through duplexes or change in uses. So I'll have something for you guys at the, either August seventh meeting or the one after.
Let's do the one after.
Sure thing.
All right. What is on the, so I have a seventh meeting, just a question for you. I know we have eight fifteen Bedford Street, right?
Correct.
We have a hearing that I have to recuse myself from, so I, just to make sure there's enough people there.
I think, I think you have, yeah, yeah, there's a few, as well as I think Winter Street was continued to that one.
So I have to recuse myself in two hearings, and, and, and we got a referral from the council, not yet, is that correct?
From fifty, the fifty five plus?
Correct.
I would have, I have to email Deb, we, like I said, council was last night, so I got, I know it was referred to us, but it's scheduling. A meeting and see if the CD committee was available probably for that August seventh date.
Can we do it the second meeting? And that was, can we do it the second meeting in August?
I, I'll. Oh, I'm going to reach out to Deb first to see when the CD committee is available. I know what our availability is on the seventh and the twenty first, so.
If we can go to the twenty first, I think the twenty first will be better.
All right, oh, but I'll give, I'll get back to you and keep you posted on that, but we have. Couple of special permits, another subdivision.
Another subdivision outside of Winter Street?
We had a, we, a couple of months ago, we had a preliminary subdivision for three fifty Cross Street. That's coming to us through the definitive subdivision process.
That's on for August as well.
Yeah, and then three special permits.
And eight fifteen Bedford Street.
Correct, two continued items. A, a new subdivision and then three special permits.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you about the. The lineup, because like I said, there's two or three things that I have to recuse myself from on that seventh, so.
Sure.
Does anybody plan on being absent at this point from the seventh, just hope we have a special permit or something, we can handle that?
I should be there.
Should or shouldn't?
Should, should.
All right. All right. Did you kind of handle your planners report already, or do you want?
Yeah, just, it'll be something that will be voted on for that special permit process, but we did receive a. A waiver request from the engineering review fee for a special permit and a change in use, not to provide. Any recommendations, but I, I, I feel like it's an acceptable request. There's not a change in. Conditions of the site itself. It's really an interior change. So I would find that to be an acceptable request, but that'd be something we would vote on in terms of the application itself.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
But other than that, nothing really going on in town.
Let me, speaking of Winter Street and that subdivision, just timing wise, Greg, where are we with Winter Street? Is the, the plan's done yet?
Uh, the, the Winter Street improvement plan?
The, the pavement and all that stuff for Winter Street?
Yeah, it's, it's about ninety five percent. Done. Yeah, we have to. Put together a, a bid package for it, but what's, what's happening now is. Flag Street is going out for an emergency repair on the, on the drainage. Flag Street is going out for an emergency repair on the, on the drainage. And we have to get Flag Street. Safe for travel before we can take the truck. Um, all route off of Winter Street. So we have to, we have to do the improvements on Flag Street first before we can open up. Um, Winter Street. Uh, or, or open up before we can, um. Yeah, start working on, on Winter Street.
But I guess, I guess Mike, the reason I asked is if. If you start work before we have a final approval or before the plans are signed off on this new subdivision on Winter Street, I can't sit in on it, but. Yeah, I'm sure you'll coordinate with that developer to, to do a stub before you pave, correct? I mean, that's, that neighborhood's on your radar as far as.
Right, yeah, um, what, what they can do is they, they can, um. You know, they can stub off all their utilities. They can bring their utilities in. Um. And the way that subdivision is designed is so that the intersection. Um, is tying into the proposed new location of, of Winter Street. So.
But I guess, but I guess, Mr. O'Brien, so. We're all on the same page, so I just don't want to get to a point where we pave that street. And then the board approves a plan and then they can't tie in for two years. We're all on the same page, like it's, it's on DPW's radar that that neighborhood is going in. And if you get to the point of bidding it, you'll make sure they tie those utilities in. Even if we don't have an approval in case there's a, a future approval, correct?
Right, they'll, what they'll have to do is pave that spur as, you know, per the proposed plan. And that way, when the subdivision finally, you know, gets approved. They just take it from the property line on in. With the road.
All right, I just want to make sure it's on the radar, that's all.
It is, it's factored in.
All right.
Um, with, we're just, right now, we're doing a little bit of a juggling act between Winter and Flag Street.
All right, anything else from the board? No. Anything else from staff?
No, uh, we got some emails, I think. Well, I guess this is. For you, Pat, uh, CPC, I guess they're working on a five-year plan.
Right, and then, yeah, we, we just, we have a hearing coming up, so I'll keep you guys in the loop on that. I, when, I'm, I'll have to find out when the first, I think the first hearing's coming up in a. Couple of weeks, so I'll, I'll, I can send an email to you, Shane, with that date, if people want to participate.
Yeah, because I know, uh, JM Golson reached out to us for some questions regarding, uh. Um, forty B information, so we're, we're working with them on that, just to keep in the loop, um, to help with that, uh, five-year plan. Um. But yeah, I think that's pretty much it, working on, uh. Working with, uh, open space committee, uh, be on their meeting for tomorrow. Uh, because the town's gonna look to, uh. Looking for, I'm going to look to do a grant for, uh, monies for an open space and rec. Plan update, um, so. That'll be something that'll be submitted and I'll keep you in the loop how that goes.
All right, and then can we put nine hundred Elm Street on the next agenda for discussion? I'll talk to you about it later.
For the nine hundred Elm Street for, okay.
Just for discussion.
Sure, we'll throw it under, we'll throw it in discussion, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, if that grant was, uh, granted, um, where would you put the open space parcel?
It's a, oh, I apologize, Michael. It's not an open space per se, it's the plan. So for us to be subject to state grants for parks and open space, we have to have an active seven-year. Uh, open space and recreation plan. So the last time we did our plan was in twenty eighteen. And surprisingly, seven years from then is going to be. Twenty twenty-five. Uh, so I'm just trying to get on it now, uh, because the amount of time it would take for consultants, public hearings. Public meetings, uh, and just the entire process. Uh, April twenty twenty-five will happen sooner than later. Uh, so I'm just making sure that we don't have a plan that's expired, um, so we. Maintain eligibility for such exciting open space parcels like we're, we're doing with Styles and Heart, which, uh, requires, um. State money to, uh, do.
Thank you.
All right, do a motion to adjourn. Nobody have anything else?
Don't move.
And Mr. Geller, do a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald, take the role, Mr. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
VCC Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a S. Thank you.